Oh, are you okay?
If I have to get up and run.
Okay.
If you don't have to get up and run, can I speak with you for a moment?
Sure.
Just for a minute? Okay. Well, is it seven o'clock?
It is six fifty-nine.
All righty. How are you doing?
I bet I'm the one award won.
Waiting for one minute.
It would be cool. We have this meeting outdoors.
Seven o'clock.
All right. Welcome to the September twenty sixteen meeting of the Conway Planning Commission. Thank you for coming. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items, and the City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council as early as September twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within thirty days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting. A public notice will be placed on the city's website at www.cityofconway.org. Well, the first thing we need to do is take care of the minutes from last month's meeting. Do any of you have any comments about the meetings, anything that needs to be corrected, subtracted, added, whatever?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Here we have a motion from Justin to accept the minutes as written. Is there a second? A second from Marilyn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. There was a Planning Commission subdivision committee this evening, and that committee reviewed the Ingram Village Planned Unit Development Preliminary Subdivision. So I'd like to call on Marilyn to make a report on what the subdivision committee decided.
The subdivision committee did meet, and we focused our attention on item fourteen.
Right.
And item fourteen indicates that the radius, curb radius for the subdivision in question, the street in question, is twenty-five feet rather than the established twenty-eight feet, but that's not a problem since it's in a residential area, and the fire department also does not see it as a problem. So the committee voted to approve it unanimously.
Okay. All right. Okay, now, this does not require a motion or second from the full commission. We just need a straight-up-and-down vote on whether or not to go along with the subdivision committee's vote. So all in favor of accepting the subcommittee meeting's vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Marilyn. And I would like to apologize for the temperature. In my five years on the Planning Commission, I have never felt it like this in here, so please bear with us. I've already had a request that I put this meeting on fast forward and get us out of here as quickly as possible, so we'll certainly try, but at the same time, to do justice to each of the items. The first item up for discussion by the entire commission this evening is the Skeeto request for rezoning a property at thirty-six hundred Donnell Ridge Road from I-1 to R-1. That's an intermediate industrial district one to single-family residential district R-1. Now, let me briefly sketch out the ground rules before I call for public comment on this. We will allow anyone to speak both for and against this. We will start with the people in favor of the request, and the first speaker will have up to ten minutes. Any subsequent speakers will have up to two minutes each, and then the same time limits will apply to anyone who's opposed to the request. So who would like to start speaking in favor of this Skeeto rezoning request? And would each speaker, when you come up, please give us your name and address for the record, since this is a public hearing?
Okay. Beth Skeeto, fifty-seven Timber Lane Trail, Conway. And coming tonight, we have some property there. We have recently replatted it, and we've kind of reorganized the property into a smaller lot that fronts McNutt Road, that kind of commercial corridor. We have plans for that, for our family business, but we replatted the other lot into a larger lot that we've already confirmed with the street department to get primary access to that lot from the Donnell Ridge side, which is more of a residential corridor, and we would like to, in the future, use that for our home. So we're asking for the rezoning to a residential, and we feel like that that's kind of in line with that kind of corridor there, so.
Are there any questions for Beth? All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, I'll bring it back into committee. Commissioners, what do you have? We have a motion to approve from Matthew Brown, a second, from Wendy Shire. Is there any discussion of the motion before I call for a vote? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Does anyone abstain? I vote with the ayes, so that passes unanimously. Next item is a rezoning request for, by Life Choices Incorporated to rezone the property located at thirteen thirty South Donaghy Avenue from A-1, which is Agricultural, to O-2, which is Quiet Office District. Who would like to begin speaking in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Donna Gray. I'm a member of the board with Life Choices. Address is six oh nine Locust Avenue in Conway, Arkansas. We're pleased to be before you tonight with our request for rezoning of the property at thirteen thirty South Donaghy. We have an offer and an acceptance to purchase this property, and the seller has authorized Life Choices to be before you to make this request tonight. Life Choices is a nonprofit pregnancy resource center, serving Conway and the surrounding communities for over thirty-six years. For the past ten years, we've rented space on the second floor at six oh nine Locust, just about three blocks southwest of here. All of the services we provide are provided at no charge. We provide pregnancy tests, ultrasounds, and options information. We also offer education through our parenting classes and support the community by providing education on health-related topics in response to requests from schools and from other groups. We're open four days a week, Monday through Thursday. Our office hours are nine to five each of those days. We have a small, well-qualified professional staff. Our executive director, Maria Spear, is here with us tonight, and she has led the center for more than ten years. Our medical director is a local OB-GYN here in Conway, and she has served at Life Choices for more than thirteen years. Our nurse manager is an RN who is also employed at Conway Regional in the labor and delivery unit, and she's been serving at Life Choices for more than four years. We have four other part-time positions who combined have served at Life Choices for more than fifteen years. Life Choices has consistently experienced widespread community support. We have over twenty-five hundred supporters in this community. It includes several businesses, churches, and individuals. Last year, we had a very clear demonstration of community support. Our ultrasound machine had stopped working, and we were in immediate need of a new machine. We shared that need for twenty-three thousand dollars to purchase the new machine on social media, and within six weeks, we had raised every bit of the money that was needed for that purchase. That was all thanks to our donors and the efforts of our supporters. While we've had the benefit in the past of favorable rental locations, two years ago, Life Choices began to search for a more permanent home in Conway. It's our goal to make this location at thirteen thirty South Donaghy that home and to continue to be a good neighbor in this community. We have available preliminary drawings of our vision to renovate the existing two thousand square feet and add an approximate twelve hundred square feet to the south. We can share these with you if you're interested. H&amp;M Architects prepared this for us. It is a preliminary drawing. Liz Hamilton and Joanna Nabholtz with that firm are here with us tonight. Our goal has been to, our desire is a welcoming and aesthetically pleasing presence in this community. It matters to our clients, it matters to us, and I'm sure it matters to you as well. And H&amp;M has been instrumental in helping us to actually put that vision to paper. Earlier this month, our annual fundraising event was held at Conway Expo and attended by approximately eight hundred people. The event was the kickoff as our fundraiser for this capital campaign to raise the down payment by mid-November. I'm happy to report that as of today, we're only seven thousand dollars away, here we are in September, from that mid-November goal, and so we're extremely pleased about that. We want to express our appreciation for the knowledgeable and helpful assistance provided by your planning department staff. Mr. Patrick, Mr. Lyon, and Mesquito each have been extremely helpful to us in guiding us through the requirements and ensuring that we had everything we needed to bring to you and to them. We look forward to working with these and others as we prepare for the development review process. Thank you, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have about Life Choices or our plans.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for Ms. Gray?
Based on tonight's approval, how soon do you plan on doing this, going into this phase?
We're in the process of going through development review and starting that. This would be our first step, and so we would like to proceed as quickly as possible with that process now that we have begun to work with our architect.
So what's your target date to have this completed, if approved?
Maria? Well, I think that since we've got such a favorable response to the funding, that's what we were really waiting on, was to see how our donors would respond financially. So now that we have that, I would say within a year, you know, I think Ray Nabholtz is also working with us, and he has indicated once all the pieces are in place, it could be done within a six, eight-month window.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Gray? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request?
My name's Ken Wilson, and I currently live at one twenty Los Colinas, but I was raised in Alaska, and it's too hot in this room. I am the teaching pastor at Fellowship Bible Church, and just want to say that Life Choices provides an absolutely essential service in our community. For a church like ours that has a large population, we can't keep our hands into every ministry, and we can't, as a church, own an ultrasound machine and those kind of things, but Life Choices supports that. We support Life Choices as a church. My family supports Life Choices personally, and just anything we can do to help them just continue to provide the service that they do in such a peaceful and a graceful atmosphere is a fantastic thing. And so I'm here representing a number of the pastors in the community to let you know we stand behind Life Choices and appreciate all that they do, and we're all in favor of this.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilson? Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request?
My name is Glenn Hoag, and I own the property at thirteen fifteen South Donaghy, directly across from the proposed property. And when Donna first called me, I said, "I applaud you for your transparency in the process," because, as we know, it's not always that transparent. And as a surrounding property owner, I want to speak in favor of this. I applaud their transparency and their due diligence in the process, and I also couldn't think of a better neighbor for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? And would anyone like to speak against it? Seeing none, I'll bring it into committee. What are your thoughts on this, Commissioners? We have a motion from Ann to approve this rezoning request. Is there a second? Second from Delencia. Is there any discussion of the motion before we vote? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I vote with the ayes also, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda, the Johnston request for rezoning the property located at College Avenue and West Con Lane from A-1 Agricultural to Planned Unit Development, PUD, to be known as Edgewood Park. Who would like to begin speaking on behalf of this PUD request?
My name's Lance Johnson. I live at three four four Conway Boulevard and am a partner with Michael Harrison and Reform Development Group, which is a company we formed to purchase this property and do this development. We own a construction company and intend to be the exclusive builders in the neighborhood, and so we have a vested interest in not just the rezoning of the project, but an ongoing interest as well, as both of us have carved off pieces of this property to potentially and likely live on as well. So you guys see the preliminary plat. We have worked with Brian probably more than he wants to work with us already, as well as Kenny Weedhour and Jason and Wes Kreglow and Finley Vincent. So I hope that everything you guys see in our presentation already meets the criteria that you're looking for, because we've tried to do all that work before we brought it to you, instead of having to go back and do it now. We're excited about this project. I was very encouraged in all our first meetings with city planning that most everything that we wanted to do in this project were the very things that they said were what the city is looking for and the planning department's looking for in future development. So hopefully, you guys agree, and we're ready to get started on this as soon as we can get approval and get to work.
Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson? Johnston, sorry.
With a T.
Any questions for him? All right, thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this Planned Unit Development request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? You said? Okay, come on up.
Steve Jones, I live at forty-eight ten Canal Place. My neighbor Judy's back here as well. Our property backs up to, I believe it's Phase Two of this development. It was brought to my attention, actually, about a week ago, and I would have been at the meeting last week, but we had some unexpected visits to Conway Hospital, CCU, and stuff like that, so it was really important. That's the only reason we didn't make it. However, I don't want to tell you, and as I speak to you guys, and I have a big, large appreciation for what you do. And, by the way, I guess probably some things were discussed that aren't clear, and so as I described to you that my property looks into the back of this Phase Two, it appears to me, without a survey, that I'm potentially looking at five different properties connected or within a few feet of my lot in the back. I think my yard is probably a hundred and forty-ish feet or something wide in the back. I saw smaller places, I don't actually even know what they are, fifty-five-foot lots. Y'all see that? I guess y'all have a copy of that. Am I right with that? I'm going from memory.
Fifty-five, sixty, sixty-three.
So what exactly are we putting back there? Because I have a forty-eight hundred square foot house, you know, and we're in the big piece of Western Park. Not all those houses in Western Park are, you know, three thousand, four thousand feet, five thousand feet, but right where we are, they're pretty large, and I'm curious, you know, as to what's going on over there. And so if you could, maybe he can answer that question, or maybe y'all can answer that question, I don't know.
We'll call on Mr. Johnson if we just want more information about it.
So I can't tell you that I'm necessarily opposed to it. I would be opposed to, because there, back in the day, when I used to do a lot of volunteer work and municipal work and things like that, and, you know, there were restrictions and setbacks and things like that, and it doesn't look like there's going to be a lot built back there unless we're talking about senior housing or garden homes and such, but I didn't see that noted on the plat and stuff that I glanced at. So it just doesn't, short of that, those properties don't seem to be a fit to me. And why would you put them in the back where it's quiet? Typically, and not to tell everybody what to do, but typically, you put the, you know, the smaller residences if they, you know, maybe in a little higher traffic area, and you take the bigger places and you start tucking them back in a way. That's just typically kind of what I've seen here in Conway. I mean, you guys know better than I do, but, you know, my point is, is we just don't want to be inundated with something that we're not aware of what it is. And by the way, my property is on the market. I've lived within half a mile, three-quarters of a mile of where I live now since nineteen sixty-eight. So, you know, and we've always known the area was going to develop, and we love the way it's developed. It's been done nicely. City of Conway's been done nicely. Just curious as to how that fits, so. Anyway, if y'all have a kind of a decent grasp of what I'm asking for, if y'all can kind of help me get to that or let me know, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jones?
I have one.
We have a, Mr. Jones? We have a question for you, sir.
You said your place is up on the market for sale right now?
It is, yes. It is. For, I think we're at three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars or something like that right now, so.
So your concern is with the proposed size of the new facilities that are coming in and how it's going to impact your price per square foot now?
Absolutely. I mean, if we're sitting back there with three thousand, four thousand, five thousand square foot homes and properties that are going to be, let's just face it, rented someday, or maybe they start out that way, that is not conducive to good real estate values. So why would the City of Conway ever do anything to hurt real estate values? So.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jones? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? Hey, seeing none, I'll bring it in back into committee.
I guess we need to ask Mr. Johnston what the minimum square footage is on the.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, would you please come and address Mr. Jones' question?
Sure, sure. And I understand he couldn't make it to the information meeting where we had this conversation, so hopefully, they're better now, whoever was in the hospital. We're looking in the, something that will be similar to the village, Princeton Village, we're thinking the houses are going to start at a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and fifty dollars a foot, so the likelihood of this being a rental street is, I would say, fairly slim. I plan on living at the end of this street, so I don't have any intention of building anything that I don't plan on driving by possibly for the rest of my life. Square footage, we're thinking somewhere in the fifteen to eighteen hundred square foot minimum, up to maybe twenty-five hundred, three thousand at the largest on the smaller section. The five bigger lots, the estate lots in Phase One, will be three or thirty-five hundred minimum square foot houses and be half a million dollar plus houses. I don't think anyone there will be under five hundred thousand dollars on those. So we're going to try to sell five, five hundred thousand dollar houses as close to this property as his house will be, and don't feel like we're going to have a problem doing that with the smaller neighborhoods. So as you guys have seen, the village, Princeton Village, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty, two hundred dollar foot houses, people don't necessarily need or want four thousand square foot house anymore. There's a lot, matter of fact, we have twenty folks, twenty-plus folks on a waiting list now for when this development goes through, and I would say ninety-nine percent of them live in their, so Mr. Jones may want to buy a lot in our neighborhood if he's selling his big house and move over onto our street. That's the, most of the folks that are interested are going to be selling their large houses where their kids have grown, but they still want a nice house. So that's what we're looking for. And the reason, the size of lots we've done, we've, working with the city and kind of thinking about sizes of lots, we wanted these lots to be bigger than some of the other options in town that are nicer, because some of the things we've found there, those lots are just maybe a little too small. So these actually are more comparable to downtown city lots. They're not quite as deep, but close. So it's going to be nice. I mean, that's, I don't know, hey? I know until you see it, it's hard to know what they're going to be, but us also being the. But us also being the exclusive builder, we have a lot more control over what gets built on the street as well. So, we're not just selling lots to builders and then kind of losing the ability to control what actually gets built. It's currently a model home that will be very similar to the houses we're going to build going up across from CBC on Conway Boulevard. It's 2,700 square feet and three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. It's still in the framing, but it's the very much, that house will probably be built again on this street, maybe multiple times with different, you know, different facades and facelifts. So, upgraded roofs, wood windows, they're going to be nice.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Are there any questions from the Commissioners from Mr. Johnston?
What was the minimum square footage, the smallest?
We haven't set it in stone yet. And there won't be anything under 1,500 and maybe even 1,800. So, 1,500 to 1,800 will be the minimum.
And rough lay, what part of that percentage of the houses will be that size as opposed to the 5,000?
Based on the folks that are currently on our list of people, none of them are going to want to build less than a 2,000-square-foot house.
Okay.
So, I mean, we've got enough people already on a list who are interested. If all of them bought lots, they would all be sold. I think we have 16 or 17 lots. So, we know in reality, folks that put their name on a list don't all actually buy and build houses. But if they're representative of who's going to live there, there might not be any under 2,000. So, but we want it to be, in keeping with the city's philosophy, the reason that, I mean, even on our street, the reason that the lots aren't all the small lots on the front of the street and all the big lots on the end, was we wanted to mix in some smaller and bigger houses. We want it to feel more like the streets downtown where you might have a 1,500-square-foot bungalow and a 3,000-square-foot two-story right next to it. That's in keeping with the city's master plan and how they want to see new developments made where you don't have exactly what Mr. Jones was talking about, where you have, this is the line that you cross and then it goes into the cheap stuff, or here's the line you cross into the expensive stuff. So, it's all, none of it's going to be low-income housing, but we certainly don't mind and would like to bring back to a new development the feel of, here's a 150 or a 200 or 250,000-dollar house, and there might be a 400,000-dollar house next to it on the other side of. So, I mean, I think that's a good, and really the city's plan for how they want to see developments done.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Johnston?
Did that answer your question?
Well, is it appropriate to ask just another question? So, are there, you know, like behind my house, those four or five lots, I'm looking at the 3D, are there? One of them's on 83 here, is the city waiving the setbacks? And at what point do you come in and ask for that? Can you really build an 1,800-square-foot house on 83? Go wide lot and beat all those setback requests if you can, I'm all for that. And then, you know, or you guys want to ask for a waiver because a couple of those lots are a little smaller or something? We're going to have 2,000-square-foot houses on all these other ones, but when it's your house looks into, those three right there, that by the way, we don't advocate this, and after we've been looking at it, it's beautiful property, that we're going to change it, it's going to have its problems. And this is what my wife wants to know, and probably my dad wants to know is, are you guys going to be convincing that back there, and then what's the convention requirement and that kind of stuff? I'm sure you guys won't talk about that, and I apologize for that.
You, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to just discuss a couple of things about the lot size. This, and I hope everybody can hear, I'm kind of going both ways here. The lot sizes are basically, on this Phase Two, you've got ones 123 feet by 55 feet, and I think that's the smallest one I see on there. But basically, that's 700 feet less than a typical R1 single-family neighborhood you see all across town, a single-family typical, pick any of them across town, 7,500-square-foot lot is basically, that's the minimum size you can have. Some are a little bit bigger than that or others. But, so this is only seven, the smallest lot in this Phase Two is only 700 feet less than the minimum requirement for a typical neighborhood. Now, there's some in there that are bigger, and I calculated one of them is like 70 feet wide. It's like 1,100 square feet bigger than the minimum. So, you average it out, they're all pretty much average, you could say, single-family lot sizes you find in a typical neighborhood in anywhere basically West Conway. Lot size, I mean, square footage is the city zoning ordinance, doesn't require any certain size square footage. You can buy a lot as long as your covenants restrictions don't prevent it. And there again, the city doesn't, we don't enforce covenants and restrictions, but, you know, if there's no coven restriction against your house, you can build a tiny house in a neighborhood if you want. The city does, as long as it meets code and all that, we don't get into lot, or excuse me, we do get into lot sizes, but we don't regulate square footage of homes. So, hopefully that answers from a technical end, some of this. And about fencing, I don't know, we don't require fence as part of any typical single-family residential neighborhood construction, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnston. Please, if you would, come up to the microphone.
We will have some fencing limitations. I mean, we're going to not let people, don't take this the wrong way, we're not going to let people do the privacy fences that all of our neighborhood's going to have to look at. Everybody's different across your yard. So, ours will actually, so ours will actually have, I mean, we're going to have like, if you have a fence, it has to look like this. We're going to encourage people not to build fences. Right now, there's a pretty good natural barrier, and I don't know what you can see versus what's out there, but we're going to encourage people to plant evergreens and keep any trees that are there and even between houses. But like the Village has some interesting creative fencing that doesn't just, it's not just six or eight-foot privacy fences. That's the kind of things that we'll approve and we'll allow. We're not going to tell someone if they want a fence to keep in a kid or an animal that they can't have one, but we'll definitely have some fencing requirements that won't be six or eight-foot picket privacy fences. Yep. But again, encouraging people, so if I'm not mistaken, there's really only a couple of houses, and it might just be right where your house is, standing on our lots, unless somebody decided to clear the trees on the back of their lot, you really can't see almost any of the houses on Canal Place from our property because of the natural evergreens and the trees that are on there. We won't be clearing those when we develop, right? We won't have any reason to, other than where utilities have to go or where the streets go, which won't affect anything along this property line. If someone decides they don't want trees in their backyard, we're not going to tell them they can't cut them down if they want to do that, but we're not going to take them out. As a lot of developers would just clear the lots completely, we're going to leave every tree that doesn't have to come out for the road and infrastructure.
So, you're not going to do one big fence around the entire perimeter?
No, no, ma'am. Absolutely not.
How wide is this natural barrier that you're talking about in between?
Um, there is the Tucker Creek Drainage Ditch, it may have an official name, is that? So, it's a large ditch. I think there's probably 20 feet maybe between their fences and the other side of the ditch, the property. And they put in the sewer when the. From your fence all the way to the other side of the ditch where like a fence would be on the other property? It's pretty good. I mean, it's a pretty good span there at the back, so. I hadn't put a tape measure on it, so I might, they may have, I'd trust them if they say it's less than that. But they did, when they put the sewer lines in, our sewer line already runs right there along that property. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, I know, because I know the people I bought the property from, 15 years ago, when they put that sewer line in, Conway Corp. just swathed, you know, 40 feet to put the sewer line in. And the Francis who owned that property made, went back and made Conway Corp., and I think Brian and these guys remember some of this, plant all those evergreens back there because they took out ones they didn't have to. So, most of that is actually planting, it's not even just natural, with natural growing up with it. I would say the back, and it varies from spot to spot, the back 10 or 15, 20 feet is pretty dense with trees along the fence line. And since we don't have to go back and do that, there's no plan, and you, I think it's on our plat where utilities will go, apart from a couple of places we have to come off of the sewer line, we don't have any reason to take any of those trees off the back of the property. And there shouldn't be any utility that causes them to come out, since it's already there. So, I would fully expect, I don't know why somebody would cut those trees down to look at their roof and fence. I mean, they could, somebody might just decide they hate trees, but I would think they'll all probably stay. And we'll certainly encourage strongly them to keep them.
I have one question. As the developer, at some point, you will set the covenants and restrictions to set correct? And the minimum square footage at this point will be 1,500 square feet?
I'm not sure it'll be that small. We're, it'll be 1,500. If somebody came to me in this phase of the first 20 people we have on the list and really wanted to build a 1,500-square-foot house, I would let them go that small. So, as of today, the minimum that I would build for somebody in there would be 1,500 square feet, correct? As I said, I don't, none of the folks I've currently talked to are interested in anything that small. But if somebody was, we would go down to that size. But it would be, so you know how they work, it would be $170 or $180 a square-foot house to build a 1,500-square-foot house to the standards that we're wanting to build. It would probably be the most expensive house on the street, just because of the size. The smaller you build a nice house, the more expensive it is per square foot, so.
Are there any other questions from the Commissioners for any member of the audience? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, what are your thoughts on this?
I mean, I think if you got, if you got a planned urban development like this with someone willing to, A, put the effort into it and the care into it that Mr. Johnston is, in fact, willing to stake his own residence in the back, and with the details that he's laid out, my concern was, you know, what the residents' concern was at first. So, Princeton Village went in across and yet Western Park. So, my concern at first was, because I'm like them, missed the meeting. But I think he's satisfied, you know, my concerns. I mean, as long as you're not, as long as it's not going to take away, but it's not from the property values to those, you know, surrounding neighborhoods, but it sounds like it's only going to enhance the neighborhoods if what he builds comes to fruition, then I see nothing but, I see this being nothing but an asset. And the fact that it's a, you know, PUD as opposed to just a regular development can only make that better, because he has more control over how it gets developed.
Any other comments on this or questions? Now, just a reminder, this is a planned unit development. We can place any conditions on it that we wish. Jerry, are you interested in making a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Okay, what about any, with any conditions?
I mean, I didn't really see any that, you know, that the staff, you know, recommended.
Yeah, bottom of page 14.
Well, that's what I was going to say, other than, other than what these were, whether what the staff had added here.
So, do you want to retain those four conditions as part of your motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a, okay, we have a motion from Jerry to approve this PUD request with the four conditions at the bottom of page 14. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, second from, I believe Brooks was first on that. So, before we vote, is there any discussion of the motion or any questions about the motion?
You know, I'm all pro-development, but I really am concerned about how narrow those lots on the back lines. Those seem awfully narrow. And as the conditions are right now, there's no provision in there to say, well, you need to, you have to build 150, 200 square foot, you know, $200 square-foot house on those back lots. I mean, who's to say that Phase One doesn't go in, and Phase Two, there's financial trouble, and so all of a sudden we have very, very tiny rental row houses, which are completely inappropriate for this neighborhood. I'm inclined to not support it without some sort of condition about minimum square footage. And if that means that the lots have to be redrawn and make them bigger, so be it. Those are just tiny, tiny lots. I mean, I think that's more appropriate for a downtown or an old part of town, not out here where there's these nice, beautiful lots. I mean, I don't want it to be a case of, we spent so much for the land, we have to cram every possible lot we can out there in order to make all the finances work. So, without some sort of minimum square footage or some other.
Jerry, are you willing to add any further conditions to your motion? Or do you want your motion to stand as is?
Well, I mean, if there's, if Matthew has an amendment he'd like to present, but.
I think.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What did you say, Jerry? I couldn't hear.
He was asking if Matthew wants to present an amendment.
Oh, to the motion.
To the motion. I'm asking Jerry if he wants to add any other condition to his motion.
I think.
I mean, we can consider, I mean, I don't know how we add, I mean, I don't, he said that 1,500 square foot, but would be his minimum. You know, we can certainly add that, he's agreed to that. But, you know, it'd be hard for us to put a condition on price per square foot, right? That's arbitrary.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any way to do that, which is, unfortunately, like square footage is one way you can kind of do it by proxy. I mean, I think our idea would be to say 1,500 to 1,800. I think that we should take 1,800 square foot, but if you got to make the lots bigger, so be it. I think we also may want to, I would like a green space requirement at back line between that and this, so there's something about, you know, no, there will be maybe a 20-foot wide place that, you know, no trees, or trees will be planted. Because I don't think that, you know, not having a fence, I see the pros of that, but I think some greener could be appropriate.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, the motion has been seconded, but so, we've had discussion of the motion by Matthew. Jerry, do you want to make any alter, any additions to your motion or changes to your motion before we proceed with the vote?
Right, so Matthew's suggested that we amend the motion to include 1,800 square foot minimum, which I'll accept as an additional condition, and that we also put in a condition to include some sort of forced barrier on the back to include the green space, so that if none exists, that it would be on the developer to provide that.
Now, when you say the back, are you talking about?
The back of the lots.
Just, right, just here on the south side or also the west side?
Well, it's up to us to decide, right?
Just the south side?
On.
Canal?
The side that backs up to Canal Place, which is.
I mean, you have the west side that backs up to Cory, which.
Right.
Has the same issue.
And looks like even bigger houses.
Yeah.
So, yeah, both of those. And then, there's a small portion to the north that looks like it borders thoroughhomes. I'm talking about this.
Oh, they are right there.
Yeah, I'm personally not as worried about the north, since those are much bigger lots.
Yeah, they are.
Right.
It's going to be, I just don't want it to be row houses backdriving these people's backyards.
Okay, so Jerry, am I correct then, you want to add a fifth condition requiring 1,800 square feet as the minimum home size? Is that, am I correct? Okay.
Yeah, I'll accept his amendment for that.
Okay, now, Brooks, you're the person who's seconded, so I want to ask you, are you willing to second this change, this, a fifth condition stipulating a minimum of 1,800 square feet per home?
Yes, I am.
In this PUD. Okay, so we've got a fifth condition added here, and we've got it seconded. Now, are you wanting to add a sixth condition also, Jerry, or leave it at that?
What's the depth? I mean, what do you guys, what do you guys perceive the depth? I mean, if we have him provide screening, what, I mean, what's the depth you think we should provide? Like, if you don't want to provide a fence, right, I get that he doesn't want the development to have picket fences, and so that's fine. And if he doesn't want to build a fence back there, so if he wants it to be green space, which is great, and if there is none, and we say you have to provide trees, and that's great. He may go plant some trees on Canal or wherever, but we can't say you got to, you got to plant 50 feet worth of, deep worth of trees, but we can say 10, 6, 8, we could pick something, something reasonable.
There are some thinned-out areas back there in the back. It's not just full, thick, you know. It's not just full thick, you know, trees and woods buried all the way across. I mean, you can kind of see on there, that, you know, talking about, it seems like that could possibly, like what you're saying, in some areas be not quite a, I guess, a barrier.
But, I mean, even if you require, what if the homeowner say that...
A minimum of 10, 10 feet, 15 feet.
Maybe 10 feet off the east.
Right.
Yeah. But that won't interfere with the utilities.
Okay, Jerry, so do you want to add a sixth condition here? You want to specify a number for a feet, or do you want us to go ahead and vote on with five conditions?
I mean, I'm fine either way. What do you guys, I mean...
I think there should be a tree line.
All right.
But that's, regardless, I'm going to say at least 10 feet, at the very minimum, 10 feet.
I'll add, I'll add the condition that we should, we should say that all lots should have either a fence or at least 10 feet of green space in the back.
Hey, Brooks, are you willing to go along with that also?
Yes, I second.
Okay, so we've got two, we've got the four conditions that are already printed there at the bottom of page 14, plus the fifth condition requiring a minimum of 1,800 square feet per home in this planned unit development. And we've got a sixth condition requiring a 10-foot green space zone along the...
Or a fence.
Or a fence along the part of the property that backs up to the homes on Canal Place. Is that correct? Just on that, just that part of the PUD, the part where it backs up to the homes on Canal, that face Canal Place?
Phase Two.
Okay. All right. Okay, are there any, is there any other discussion of the motion before we vote?
Yes. Brian, do those additional recommended conditions in any way throw a kink any of the plans from your department?
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And, or does anyone abstain? Yeah, vote with the ayes also, so that does pass unanimously with the six conditions. Now, I want to mention something that's on the back of our booklets, just to be a thinking of between now and the time of the next meeting, October 17th. The five-year terms for me and Matt are going to, are coming up to their expiration date at the end of this year, and so we will have to be replaced. The process of advertising, interviewing, and all that is going to kick off October 1st. And at our next meeting, I'm going to, I'm thinking I'm going to ask for two volunteers. We'll probably do it like we've done in the past two or three years, where you have two subcommittees interviewing applicants. So, I'm going to ask for two of you to volunteer to head up the interviewing, the two interviewing committees that we'll need to form at our next meeting. So, just remember that for next time. And now, does any member of the commission have any other business that needs to be brought up?
Are there business, Mr. Chairman? I'll make a question to you.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn from Ann. Is there a second?
So moved.
Second from Delencia. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed, or does anyone abstain? That passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Right. Brian, hey, never mind, she's talking to Mark now.